Ina is having trouble connecting though. Is having trouble connecting though.
We're live folks.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the second work session of the city council for January 2022. As a reminder, this is a work session where the public does not have an opportunity to engage in questions to the council. Tonight's discussion is going to focus on the fire commissioners request to purchase a new ladder truck. This item was originally on the agenda for the January 18th city council meeting, but it was pulled. Leading up to that meeting and through today, the council has had two to three dozen related questions. Almost all of which are in a 39 page plus PowerPoint presentation that Commissioner Miller will walk us through this evening. I want to take this opportunity to thank the commissioner and his staff for their many, many hours of work on this recommendation. Tonight's discussion will inform the council as it does its job to make sure that we are getting the best truck for the city's needs at the best price. Based on what I know as of tonight, the discussion will primarily focus on why we need a new ladder truck. What was the process to identify the recommended truck? What are all the factors that should be considered for such a purchase? The council may defer or ask for input from other city staff during tonight's meeting. With that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Miller.
All right. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Dave, whenever you're ready, if you want to start it, I'll present the the presentation that we made. Next, Dave. Next, okay. In Long Beach, we have 61 high-rise buildings, eight of them are over seven stories tall. This includes schools, nursing homes, condos, hotels, and apartment buildings. After Superstorm Sandy, many homes in Long Beach went from one stories to three-story houses. Long Beach is a Barry Island that we all know and needs to be self-sufficient in case of bridge failure. Next. Construction in the city of Long Beach is adding additional multi-story high-rise buildings, for example, the Superblock. Located between Long Beach Boulevard and Riverside Boulevard, and there are more buildings going up on Shore Road. Next. We are guided by the NFPA and ISO, and they stand for National Fire Protection Association, which is a national standard. For fire service throughout the country and the insurance service office, which sets the fire insurance ratings for the residents of Long Beach. Next. In the ISO NFPA identifiers low hazard areas, which would be one or two-story dwellings, scattered businesses. Like industrial occupancies, it's a smaller scale. You need two pumper, one ladder truck and other vehicles. Next. A medium hazard area would be apartments, offices. Mercantile industrial occupancies. For that, you would need three engines and one ladder truck. Next. Long Beach falls into the high hazard area, which you have multiple apartment buildings, nursing homes, hotels, condos, schools. For that, you need three pumper and two ladder trucks with other vehicles in the department. Next. So with that, for Long Beach, we definitely need to have our two ladder trucks in service at both all times. These are recommendations based on both NFPA and ISO. Next. We are recommending as the fire department that the city enter an agreement to purchase the new ladder truck. At the cost of 1.769 million to replace the existing ladder truck we have. Next. Why do we need the truck? Do we really need to replace the current one? Can we lease or buy a used ladder truck? Next. As you can see the picture here, this is our firehouse during Superstorm Sandy at headquarters. This is where it's elevated a little bit, so the truck's going out into the streets or a little bit further underneath the water. Next. So why? Our current truck has outlived its usefulness. Well, most fire apparatus last around 20 years based on the use. The damage to the truck during Hurricane Irene and Superstorm Sandy has accelerated the decline of the truck's serviceability. Now, we've experienced a high average of downtime in the last five years. The ladder truck's been out two of those years. Waiting repairs or end or parts. Is it going to keep costing this city money to stay in service? We've spent over 300,000 so far keeping this truck going. We're getting near the end where it'll keep costing us more and more to keep going forward. Next. During mayor of 2021, the senior mechanic at the city garage advised. The truck company members along with the chiefs said they should start looking to purchase a new ladder truck sooner rather than later because the damages and need of repair was increasing. As was the overall cost to keep the truck in service. In consideration of these looming repair issues, the committee was formed by the chiefs and the truck company members. In December of 2021, the final design specifications was made for a replacement ladder truck. Next. The idea of purchasing a used ladder truck. Where most fires last, which I'm sorry, most fire apparatus last between 20, 25 years, depending on location of use and how many alarms they respond to. In our city, we try to get 20 years for each piece of apparatus, but sometimes, for example, Irene and Sandy. Damage happens that decreases the serviceability of an apparatus. Attempting to purchase a used ladder truck would mean it's probably been used to its potential. And for a high response area like Long Beach, the ladder truck would not last the timeframe we would need it for. It would cost the city additional funds to maintain and have to eventually replace it. Next. What type of ladder truck should we purchase? The committee developed a pros and cons list for each of the manufacturers they looked at. Most of the manufacturers did not offer a truck with a ladder long enough to reach the upper floors of current buildings in the city. And other companies had trucks that were too long in length to get down the blocks like the canals, President Streets, and the one ways in the West End. Next. Some of the manufacturing pros for the Pierce was an 18-month manufacturing time. It was a shorter truck to fit in the streets. It would be developed with saltwater protection, larger variety of warranties. And pricing was better and then manufacturing service count centers are on Long Island. For the Ferrari, the pros was they had 105-foot ladder and it was more compartment space. The Seagrave was just a compartment space. And the Rosenbauer was 18 months manufacturing with a larger cab. Next. Some of the cons that we faced was for the Pierce, it had less compartment space. For the Ferraris, decrease in reputability and a decrease in quality. For the Seagrave, it was a longer truck, three-year delivery date and 1.5 million starting price without adding anything extra to it. Rosenbauer, the ladder was too short, 88 feet, parts are not readily available. As a foreign manufacturer, and there's only one other department in NASA that actually has a truck from Rosenbauer. And the truck itself would be longer than what we were looking for. Next. Why right now? As a result of the extensive work done by the committee last fall, they were able to secure extremely competitive pricing. Trade-in value that we were hoping to get for the truck is between 2 and 250,000. The price of the ladder truck and all of its components were increased by 15% over $100,000 if the agreement's not reached by the end of the month. Not only could the overall price be withdrawn from the offer, but any incentive set forth in the offer are also subject to change if we do not accept. Next. Was this, why wasn't this equipment already requested in prior capital plans? This equipment was not identified to be replaced in recent capital plan submissions. Prior capital plan submissions were made by the department projecting future needs. As an example, in 2012, prior to. Superstorm Sandy, the new engine, we had put in for a new engine in Capitol project for 2018, 19. The condition of this ladder truck has been deteriorating over the years, but dramatically starting the last two years. The department is attempting to be proactive in identifying the future needs of the department. Next. Why did we go with a Pierce? The Pierce offered the fastest and best quality turnaround time. Pierce owns Oshkosh Defense, which is contracted through the, I'm sorry, Oshkosh Defense owns Pierce, which is contracted through Defense Production Act. Which allows the materials before the manufacturing company, they get it first. They have better warranties, they have three service centers on Long Island, and the one that we expect that would fit the streets of Long Beach the best. Next. Was the board of fire commissioners involved in the selection of this ladder apparatus? The truck committee was established and consisted of senior members from the company. Throughout the truck building process, the committee was in constant contact with the chief's office and the city garage advising them of the progress of the truck. Fire commissioners were notified of the truck's progress and the commission was notified upon completion of design. Next. Has a model of a Pierce apparatus been inspected, tested, or so when and by whom? In September of 2021, Fire Max Supply Company was able to bring down a demo truck to Long Beach for the committee to look at and check out. Truck was driven up and down the tight streets throughout the city, so members could see how it performed. Members were able to see all the various controls, compartments, cab space, and decide what worked and did not work for the city of Long Beach. The truck committee was able to look at a variety of current in-service Pierce ladder trucks across Long Island. North Belmore, in October of 21, the company was able to. Go check out the truck where they had their own dedication ceremony. Roslyn had one in July of 2021, North America October 21, Lindenhurst in January of 22. Next. The other long-term problem is Jesus aerial truck. So what is their experience with it? Currently on Long Island, there are 100 of these, I'm sorry, there are 10 of these trucks in service with additional five on order. The committee spoke with four of these departments, asking many questions about their likes and dislikes. The committee was able to ascertain information such as not to go with Detroit diesel engine. Because Roslyn found it needed regeneration too frequently. When speaking with Noah Belmore, the department informed our truck committee, they did not like the roll-down compartment doors because they stick from time to time. Next. The proposal says it's being purchased under HGA C contract FS 12-19 item FS 19 VA 09. The 09 is for a Pierce Arrow. The resolution was to purchase a Pierce Enforcer. The contract, the 09 is the base miler type of cab that is offered by Pierce. As an add-on option for the truck committee decided. It would best to go with the velocity cab as it offers more room for cab in the cab for members. The velocity does not have its own item number on the VS 12-19. Next. The contract price for the 09 is 1.3 million. The price resolution is 1.7. Why is there a difference? On the contract, the price is 1.3, and this is the base price. Adding to the contract is multiple services, testing treatments by the dealer over the next five years. Also included is tool mounting, delivery fee, inspection trips out to the factory and tools that are being purchased with the truck. Next. The 09 is the most expensive Pierce aerial listed in the HGAC contract. It was the most expensive option selected. Under the HGAC contract, Pierce enforcers are less expensive than Pierce arrows. The only, the 09 is the only mid-mount 100-foot ladder listed on the HGAC contract. The Pierce enforcer that is $300,000 cheaper is a 110 rear mount tower ladder. On the 107 rear mount tower ladder. Or the, I'm sorry, or the 170 rear mount tower ladder, which is two different trucks. It mid-mount is shorter in length and height, which is what the committee is looking for. The resolution had a typo. We should have stated Pierce Velocity. Fire Max Supply Company has corrected the contract and is attached. And sent over. Next. According to the proposal sheet. The engine is a 605 horsepower Cummings X15 engine. Per the Pierce website, the engine options for the enforcer are Cummings L9, X12, or the Packard MX13 with engine horsepower 370 to 525. There is no 605 horsepower engine option listed for the enforcer. The X15 is an engine option on the Arrow, not the enforcer. Parts of the Pierce website have not been updated since December of 19. Including the link to Pierce website for the velocity cab, which is the cab the committee has decided to go with. Under engines, it states the Cummings X15 engine. Next. We are a two-square-mile city with flat terrain. Why does the apparatus need the highest horsepower, most expensive engine option available? The cab is a velocity and not any of the other types listed. This is reflected in the bid spec and line item skews. The actual engine in the specification is the Cummings X15 Pro that has the horsepower specifications to match what's in writing. The apparatus is very heavy. The largest engine is normally specced on an aerial device. It was done on both the current ladder tower we have and the 91 Pierce ladder which we had before. Hills would strain an engine more, but even getting the apparatus moving without taxing the engine to redline on flat ground requires a larger engine. Next. During our research, we were informed by each of the departments that have this truck and put a smaller engine in it have not been happy with the decision. More importantly, the city garage senior diesel mechanic recommended the bigger engine. Truck committee worked very closely with the city garage to make sure everything mechanical in the truck can be easily maintained by the garage when the first five-year maintenance warranties are up. This prolongs the life of the truck. Next. The proposal includes equipment that goes on the fire truck, ladders, pipe poles, extinguishers. Is the standard equipment as included with the purchase of the fire truck or are they add-ons? If an add-on is the new equipment needed, it may make sense to replace old equipment with the purchase of the new truck. But if it is an extra cost, is the equipment currently on hand in need of replacement? Normally, a new truck has a lot of new equipment that comes with it because of the equipment is currently in service or is outdated or over 20 years old. In this case, the truck committee went through all the equipment that is currently in service and wrote down items we need to purchase with the truck. This included battery-powered fans, battery-powered lights, a thermal imaging camera, ladders, radios for the truck itself. These battery-powered items are needed as the new truck will not have a generator or power reels in it, on it for an effort to cut costs on the truck. Next. The rest of the equipment, SCBA packs, saws, ropes, hand tools. Other miscellaneous things will be transferred over from the current truck. This helps cut costs on the overall truck price. Many of our current ground ladders are in poor shape. There are two major aluminum ladder brands in use for the fire service. The brand we have is not what the manufacturer uses or designs for. We are able to accommodate more ground ladders into the new truck by going with the offered brand of ladders. Next. One of the reasons, one of the reasons listed for selecting the Pierce truck is it's shorter in both length and height than the current truck. Length and height were used as cons on the other models in the comparison, but as an example, KME makes a fire truck that's even shorter than the Pierce. Also with 100-foot platform. This is not to say KME is a better option, but their websites say they offer the shortest wheelbases, overall lengths, and lowest heights in the industry. Yet they would, they were not evaluated. The comparisons were not a comprehensive list of what's out there, but rather a sampling. The committee and the company first decided on larger issues such as a mid-mount VS rear mount design and the length of the aerial device. Once the type and sign was, size was established, the committee evaluated apparatus that met that specification. Manufacturers were then eliminated based on the criteria and also general feedback from the fire service community. The KME was evaluated. While they currently offer a shorter truck, you must sacrifice the overall length of the ladder, 16 feet shorter than what the Pierce offers. Next. Directly from the KME website, the new mid-mount aerial cat is now available with an 80-foot and 102-foot platform. These two replace the existing line of 81, 95, and 100-foot mid-mount platforms with a longer horizontal and vertical reach and a shortened overall length. The 102-foot mid-mount aerial cat platform is. A two-foot rate increase vertical height to 102 and a three-foot horizontal increase horizontal reach height to 94. The apparatus overall length is decreased by two feet using the MFD cab, a 46-foot overall length is achievable. The 80-foot mid-mount platform rated vertical height is increased by three feet to 84, and the horizontal reach is extended four foot to 77. The vehicle overall length of the 84 mid-mount platform is just 43 feet. Next. Pierce also offers the largest scrub area out of all the manufacturers at 55 degrees. They also have the shortest length to get below grade 20 feet, which is a must when dealing with taxpayer fires on Beach Street. Next. ThomasNet, a reference source for finding equipment suppliers, lists 10 of the largest US fire apparatus manufacturers. Some of the largest manufacturers are not included on the comparison list. They offer, they all offer options with 100-foot platforms, which is what our department wants. Why weren't these options looked at? Spartan and Marion did not make the entire truck. They used third-party ladders and not of the design we read upon after much discussion, both within the company and the committee. Suffin is a trust box boom tower ladder and not a ladder tower, meaning you cannot climb up and down the ladder while it's extended. They are not a popular truck in our area, very few in service. Point Lookout has won and have not been fully happy with it. Next. The comparison sheets list a con for E1 as the ladder is only 95 feet. E1 has options with ladders up to 137 feet, longer than other manufacturers, and is three and a half feet shorter than the Pierce. Seven and a half feet shorter than the current ladder truck. Rosenbaum was also disqualified because the ladder truck was only 88 feet. Sorry, the ladder itself was only 88 feet. Rosenbound platforms go up to 104. The information on the comparison sheet seems to conflict with the manufacturer information on the websites. The E1 being mentioned is not an aerial platform, but a straight ladder. The vehicle we are specifying is a ladder tower, which is a full aerial ladder with a bucket basket at the end. This type of apparatus is more versatile than a straight aerial ladder or a tower ladder, which is a boom box on a bucket on the end. Rosenbound mid-mount aerial ladders are offered in 75 to 100-foot aerials with the requirements the truck committee needed. 100-foot and shortest length. The ladder offered by Rosenbaum did not meet this as the truck needed to be over 48 feet in length to accommodate the 100-foot aerial ladder. Next. Final notes. Through the entire process, the committee kept in mind that the price would be the biggest concern that the city had with this picture, with this purchase. With that in mind, the committee made a truck that would be versatile, functional, and provide the best services to the city and its residents. The committee came to myself with a truck and price, and at that time, I asked them to trim back some items on the truck to reduce the price further. The first quote was higher and we were able to reduce the price by approximately $200,000 from the original quote. Next. Any further questions? I'm sorry. The Pierce truck that we put together is. Pierce truck that we put together is the shortest overall length and height while still having a ladder. There's 100-foot tall vertical and 93-foot horizontal with a below-grade reach of 20 degrees. Truck also has the largest scrub area, like we said, at 55 degrees. The manufacturer Pierce offered the shortest tail swing turning one and a half feet off the rear. And that should be it.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Miller. I had two quick, very quick questions because I am not an expert in fire apparatus. What is the scrub area?
The scrub area is like to the sides of the truck, so if the ladder extends out and go into the sides, either way, it can go up and go down. That would be the scrub area where the ladder goes.
Okay. And what is a taxpayer fire?
A taxpayer is the fire term for like a store, storefront.
Oh, okay. Storefront. Okay. Very good. And how long have you been fire commissioner now?
I've been fire commissioner about five weeks.
And can you just say how long you're, you know, with the.
I've been with, I've been with the fire department for over 31 years.
And served as a chief before, right?
Yes, I went through the ranks of lieutenant captain. I was chief, assistant chief from 2013 to 2017. And 17 to 19, I was chief of department.
The first chief, right?
Yes, chief of department, yes.
Okay. All right. Again, thank you for this extensive presentation. I want to. Unless anybody has anything else, I want to open it up to the council members for questions. Remember, this is an informative session. We're trying to get, understand why we need this truck and why the process worked the way it did. And also let's try to rotate the questions so that one person doesn't, you know, monopolize all the time. With that, anyone like to go first?
I will if no one else will.
Thank you, Roy.
All right, I just have a couple of questions. Is specifications for the truck, where can they?
Where can they be found?
I mean, like if you had put it out to bid, for example, we would have had a specification sheet. Where would the specifications for this truck be found?
Right now, they were sent to the committee, which was sent to me and then forwarded on to the city.
Roy, I think, I think there was a summary page and some of our, in our packet. I was actually trying to find it during the presentation. Really, Joe, basically it had, I think, three or four components. The first component was approximately, the base cost was of a 1.83 million. And then there was a second phase of 199,000 for the published, published costs, and then another 200 for unpublished costs. So.
I've not seen the specification sheet.
That, that was in the packet that we all received, Roy. That's.
Joe, is that right? We have a specification sheet?
I think you're confusing it, Karen, with the options list.
No, I'm not. There was a summary page that was right around that page done. It's a summary page that basically. It's something, it categorized the costs into three to four main, main, like sub-areas.
Joe, do you have that available so you can put it on the screen?
I don't know.
No, I'm just kidding, Joe.
I don't know, Karen's talking about that.
No, it's right around the specification sheets, which were like 25 pages.
Anyone have it available now?
Rich, it was in the agenda packet. I don't know if Rich has it. Like I said, I've been trying to find it.
Rich, you have it?
Thanks for my. Give me a moment.
While you're looking, Joe, can you tell me, can you tell me about the warranty? Is that bump into bumper? Is that all encompassing? I mean, a five-year warranty?
Yes, it's a five-year warranty, bump into bumper. The service centers will cover any problems that we have. It includes preventive maintenance. If, heaven forbid, we have another issue with a storm and we get saltwater. As soon as it happens, the truck goes out, it gets cleaned, it gets protection reapplied to protect it going further.
Did that happen to our ladder that was caught in Sandy?
All our trucks caught in Sandy were never really water-prepared. It was never constructed like that. This truck is being constructed with that in mind, so hopefully to deter any future deterioration if it does go through water.
But we, we were insured at Sandy.
I'm sorry.
We were insured. All our trucks were insured. Sandy. Yes. Did, did that insurance take care of this? So that, you know, did that insurance take care of all of the damage for Sandy?
It, it went out and got fixed after Sandy, but it's been out multiple times. You know, we can fix things with saltwater damage. But ultimately, saltwater is going to win. It damages things too much. You know, it's damaged the frame, it's damaged the wiring. Things can be replaced, but not the whole truck, the whole truck really can't be replaced.
But then why would, why would insurance try to, why would we accept insurance on something that's, that's fatally damaged rather than replacement?
Because, because at that time it wasn't fatally damaged. They were able to repair it for us to keep using it. And that's why we've been able to use it for the last eight, nine years. Because of all the stuff that was done. Usually our trucks last about twenty years. And having gone through the all the saltwater and having all this damage, it's just multiplied throughout the years of how much worse it's gotten. If it was a normal, you know, truck where with no sandy, no Irene, we'd have another ten years out of it probably.
Are you, are you trying, Commissioner Miller, are you trying to say that the damage was intrusive?
Oh, absolutely.
So there
The, the truck went through four or five feet of water. It, you know, it can't get more intrusive than that unfortunately with, with it.
I know, but that's, that's, most of us in Long Beach had our cars underwater. And most of us had our cars replaced. You know, and that's why I'm kind of wondering with the insurance, why the truck wasn't replaced. I mean, a lot of what you're saying is the problem with this truck is due to Sandy. And yet we paid insurance.
Part of it is due from Sandy, part of it is because of all the after effect afterwards and just wear and tear. We're a busy town with a lot of runs. We go in and out all the time.
Donna or Ina, can you talk about the insurance process, the claim process or rich that happened here?
That would be rich.
I understand that we had a giant inventory. I wasn't here, actually. I was an intern when Sandy happened, but when it all went down, we took a giant inventory of all the damage. I believe this office coordinated with a bunch of other offices to get that information and we got we got some pretty quick checks from what I understand from FEMA.
I was also not at the city at the time of Sandy, but from the documents that I got to review in connection with all the other projects that I've worked on, it seems that the city received ten million dollars from the insurance company. So there were limits from what I understand. So this ten million dollars were allocated amongst different projects at a time.
So we weren't insured for replacement value?
For, for the fire department, yes, we had insurance for the trucks. And we used the insurance money that was put to fix the trucks. And we were able to get them back on the road. They were out for a while after Sandy. We were able to get them back on the road working. But they didn't replace the trucks per se, like the whole thing, just the
But Joe, am I, am I wrong in, in, in understanding that they didn't replace the truck enough so that the, the truck was still damaged from Sandy? I mean, that's what I'm trying to understand.
That, yeah. When Sandy happened, we lost three engines out of the four. Those were gone. We couldn't use them afterwards. We wound up, either we leased, or sorry, we rented trucks or we, I'm sorry, engines. We rented them and we were, some were donated to us that we used for a while. With the ladder trucks, they were able to do more with them in the sense of keeping them running and working. But it was getting, only going to be a matter of time before eventually it came to the breaking point where the damage from Sandy was too much to continue going forward. We wound up replacing the engines with that because of all that with the insurance. But for the ladder trucks, no, they were able to repair them and keep them going for a while. But we're at the point now where it's, it's caught up to us.
So it wasn't necessarily the replacement value, I think, Roy, is what you're asking. Instead, we got a patchwork value.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, we weren't insured for a patchwork value. That's, I guess, that's part of the thing that's bothering me. We were insured to give it to replace what you had before. And I'm reading from this that Sandy is the biggest cause of us needing a new ladder truck right now. And that's why I'm wondering, we're talking almost two million dollars and we're insured and we paid a lot of insurance and I, I'm just kind of curious, but anyway, I don't want to monopolize the time. John, do you have questions? I'll move, come back if I have it.
I'll, I'll just say, you know, before we move on, I think we, we should probably verify the insurance because, Roy, you made the assertion that we were verified at replacement value and I, I need substantiation for that. I don't want to have an assertion out there without making sure we check the facts.
Just what I have is the insurance is able to write seventy percent of the book value of the truck. So the damage would need to be more than seventy percent for the value to replace it. So the engines were more than seventy percent and the ladders probably were not over seventy percent at the time. And that's why they continue to repair them and keep it going.
Perfectly, what you're saying is when your car gets evaluated, when it gets into an accident, if it's not totaled out, it just gets repaired under the policy.
So that sounds like we need some, you know, we should probably clarify that instead of assuming, assuming something. Roy, that was a great, a great
I'll check with Mr. Geiger and make sure he can verify, you know, the process and what went down. As far as documentation, I found document that should be in your packets. I'm going to share my screen right now. This one was entitled line item H G A C spec final. That's what the PDF doc is. Is this what you were referring to, Council President?
It's in that same it's in that same packet. I can't find the, there's a summary page, which I thought was after that spec sheet. So if you go to the
The, the spec sheet itself, it should be a hundred and fifty-five pages long. The bid spec.
I definitely did not get that.
We don't have, we don't have that. We've only We don't have the bit spec. We have I printed out straight forty-nine pages of things that are, you know, the cab, the height, everything has a, a price, the oil, oil seals. But I also do not see Karen what you are referring to, and I've been through this.
Yeah, it was a summary, it was a summary page which said one point three million and then, you know, a hundred ninety-nine thousand.
With the two thousand dollar thing on it?
It was a twenty
Karen, are you talking about that?
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh.
That's a, that page is
That's a contract pricing sheet.
That's not, that's not a spec sheet.
That's not a spec sheet.
Right, that's the summary of a spec sheet. So basically I'm saying that that summary is what, is what you can use to inform the spec sheet.
As you say, you have a forty-nine page document that specifies price for each of the items?
It's part of the agenda.
Liz, you're talking about this, right?
Yeah.
That doesn't have prices on it.
No.
Right.
I'm getting, I'm getting a copy of it right now and I will send it to all of you.
So basically what I'm saying is all of that sheet without the prices is summarized on the other sheet that, John, that you found for me. So in, in lack, in lieu of not having the exact pricing, Commissioner Miller can basically summarize each group of what we're, each grouping of what we're getting in each component.
But for example, how much did the velocity cab add on to it?
Exactly.
Five thousand.
Is that what you're getting right now, Commissioner Miller, to send to the council? So that they could see those prices?
Yes, I'm getting the spec itself.
Okay, I'm sorry. Say that one more time.
I'm getting the complete specs for it.
Okay. And then just go ahead and send that to the council.
Yep.
Please, thank you.
John, you want it?
I guess I, I can.
I'd like to give Commissioner Miller another second. Are you, are you ready, Commissioner Miller?
Yes, I just sent it to everyone, so they'll get it.
Oh, I hear lots of people.
Yeah, just came through. Thank you.
All right, I guess, so I guess like Karen stated early, I'm not an expert in this area. So in order to try to make sure my questions were valid and going down the right path, I set up a rather lengthy meeting with the former Assistant Commissioner of Bureau of Fleet and Technical Services for the New York City Fire Department. That is the person that bought all the fire trucks and ambulances for the New York City Fire Department.
How many years? Many, right?
Long time.
A long time.
So I just wanted to make sure I was asking the right questions. So I, I'm going to, I guess I'm going to start because I made notes in the slide presentation. So I guess I'll go in that order first. And by the way, just Commissioner, I want to thank you because I'm sure we drove you nuts with all the questions we've sent you over the last week and a half.
No, it's a problem. I understand.
But, you know, we're trying to do our due diligence before we spend, you know, one point eight million dollars. So I guess, just a general question. So the paperwork we got said the truck was a, the truck we're looking to replace is a two thousand seven Ferrari ladder truck, but on the fire department's website, it says the truck's a two thousand eight. So I just, for clarity, is it, do you know if it's a seven or an eight?
It's an eight. The other thing, the typo.
Okay, so it just might want to fix that in the paperwork. So on, on the slide that had the title Houston, we have a problem. It said that in December of twenty twenty-one, a, a final design with specifications was made for the replacement. We had emailed asking to see the specification that was put together for the vendor, and I guess you had said that there wasn't a spec put together for the vendor. So I guess what was put together for the vendor if a full spec wasn't put together?
The committee met, after they decided which truck they were going to go with, they met with the representative and they went through the whole specification with him, exactly what they were going to go with and what they were not going to go with. And that's how the specification that developed what came to be.
So how do they decide what truck they want to go with if they don't have a specification for what they need?
They went around, again, like the presentation said, they went around and checked all different types of apparatus. They came to the decision that the Pierce was the one that worked best for them. So then they concentrated on looking at the Pierces that in and around this area. After they decided, yes, that's definitely the truck, they started talking with the manufacturer, Firematic Supply, and they sat down with him and they went through saying, we want a Pierce, this is the reason why. Let's talk about the different options. And that's where they came up with the specs from because they went through a type of cab to get the, the mid-mount and everything else in between.
Okay, so we kind of, so if I understand correctly, rather than us coming up with the specs of what we need, we came up with a general criteria of what we think we need. The consensus at the time was, I guess, the Pierce best met that need and then went and talked to the Pierce dealer and he said, here's the options you would need to do what you want. Would that be a a pretty accurate summary? Okay, were any other vendors consulted to see if they had trucks that did what the city wanted?
When they looked at all the other trucks that they, they couldn't find anything. So after reviewing it all, they just went with the, the Pierce.
Okay, because as you know, I sent in some of my questions, I found different information that there were other companies that made trucks that did meet that general criteria that, for example, I guess, like again, and even in the presentation here, we talked about the KME truck, and I'm not saying that's the right truck, but it still said, no, the KME truck doesn't work because it's got an eighty-four-foot ladder. But then the very next slide, you cut and paste from the KME website, which says, no, the ladder's a hundred and two feet. So it would work.
So Right, but that truck's also six feet longer. The longer the ladder, the bigger the truck's
No, truck isn't. That's the thing. That's what I'm saying. So like, you know, I, I did do the research. That's what I'm saying. So I guess I'm not saying the Pierce isn't the right truck. I guess my, my concern is were there other options that maybe weren't looked at because the thought process was they didn't have what was needed?
No, they, they went through what they thought were the viable trucks that might be considered for this area and they selected the Pierce out of those that they reviewed.
Okay, about how many calls per year does that ladder truck go on? Paul, I know you're not going to have all this off the top of your head.
About twelve hundred.
Okay, because I'm guessing it's twenty-three, forty-three, the pay truck that does the most runs.
Well, they also go on EMS calls, which the ladder truck doesn't.
Right, right, right. What about, you think it's probably over a thousand?
I would think so.
Okay. Let's see. Also in the presentation, it talked about if we don't buy the truck by the, by the end of the month, some incentives that are set forth in the offer may be withdrawn. I didn't see any incentives listed in the offer sheet. So what incentives are we talking about?
The prices of materials overall will be going up according to them in February. So the incentive was to purchase it at a cheaper price instead of delaying purchase and paying more money.
Okay, so it's just their February first price increase, basically.
Correct.
Okay.
And those early incentive payments that would trim down some, some of the costs. I think you saw that in one of the offer sheets.
All right. Okay.
John, while you're searching
Yeah, if you've got questions that pop up as I'm saying this, feel free to jump in.
Commissioner, I would like to also thank you. Where are you? There you are. For your for your work and being patient with with the extreme amount of questions that we're asking about this fire truck because we are not experts. We all know firemen. I know a lot of firemen in town. I know a lot of firemen at the FDNY. It's when you say, when you talk to Point Lookout into the other surrounding towns, that they weren't happy with some of the trucks that they chose. Happy is kind of subjective. Is there, did they give any specifics on why they were not happy?
Okay, which one?
With the truck?
Sutfin had mechanical issues which took it out of service for
Okay. I'm just listening right now to the committee who's here with me. One of them is
I'm sorry, Commissioner, can you introduce the committee, why they're there, please?
Sure, I have Joe Field, Teddy Reinhardt, Brian Hochschild and John Marino. But they're the ones that did all the research. They're the ones that went through everything. To answer your question, like the Sutfin, they had a lot of mechanical issues. It was out of service a lot more than we would like a truck to be.
It was a fleet-wide issue.
It was a fleet-wide issue with them?
It was a total recall of all their devices, not just a specific vehicle.
What else? There was a fleet issue for the Sutfin ladder truck that they had recalls for a lot of their trucks because of mechanical issues. Other departments, some of it was that they, they went with the, the lower engine and they couldn't get their trucks up to speed. and they couldn't get their trucks up to speed as quickly as they would like. There was issues like that. So, when they went around and talked to everyone, they got all the pros and cons of what they did and what they have, and that's what they based a lot of decision off of.
Just another follow-up question regarding the ladders. So, you stated that this one ladder has been out of service for significant periods of time.
Right, over the last five years, for about two years, mesh it all together.
But then you also said that, I don't know if it's required or suggested that we have two ladders.
Yeah, it's required for insurance rating and the NFPA standards.
So, if we're out of standards, are we penalized as a city?
No, we're not penalized. We do have mutual aid that comes in. But, you know, they come when they can. We need to, according to what they require of us, have two ladder trucks.
Now, does the ladder truck go out, as you said, on mutual aid? The city of Long Beach goes to other towns sometimes, when there's...
Of course.
It's Island Park or to Oceanside, and...
Liz, you know, you really bring up some great points here, because it related to that. The council really hasn't seen any performance reports that I can recall from the Fire Department on a regular basis. So, you know, maybe that's something that we could, you know, think about. To hear that, you know, for 40% of the time over the past, you know, basically, 40% of the time, this truck has been out of service the last five years is concerning, coupled with, we actually don't know the in-service percentage of the other truck, ladder truck. So, you know, how many, how often are we without both truck, both ladder trucks?
Luckily, we haven't been without both at the same time. We've worked it as best as we can to keep them in service, at least one of them. But the other truck also is starting to have issues too. That was just out for the last, what was it, month and a half? And we just, we came back, and we had to put it back out again. We just got it back yesterday.
I'm sorry, when you say, again, I'm asking questions just to make an educated decision on the truck in general, that the city garage is fixing these trucks? These ladders are all fire trucks? I have to say, I've never seen a fire truck at the city garage.
The city garage does fix some of the things on the trucks. Most times, especially with the ladder trucks, they'll have to be sent out to the dealers, because they have the professional ones that work on it all the time, and they'll be the ones fixing them.
Okay, so then our city garage is not working on the trucks or ladder?
They do. They work on the truck, whether it's the trucks or the engine. If it's something minor that they can handle, they do. If it's something that's more involved, or they cannot do, then they have to send it out.
And that's where it's going, that's where it costs us more money, when it's sent out.
Wait, if we have a proper service agreement, it shouldn't cost us to get the equipment serviced. It shouldn't cost us anything.
Correct. That's why with the new truck, we'd have a five-year service agreement going forward with the new truck for the next five years. It would just go out to that service center. Six years, it's a six-year thing. And it's to be serviced out there by the service center.
On Long Island, right?
Yes, they have three locations.
Firematic has three locations. Is that the name of the company?
I'm sorry?
The Firematic Company has three locations? Is that what you said?
There's, they have three locations. There's dealers. One is Long Island. One's in Westchester and one's in Connecticut. Their main shops, where they service the larger vehicles.
I just wanted to jump in. I had a couple of questions about the planning out, and, you know, and again, thank you, Commissioner, for your presentation, for all the work that's gone behind this. We totally recognize the need here. As folks have said, my fellow council members have said, we're just really looking for the right way, you know, the most right thing to do for you and for the residents and for the city. So, thank you. Yes, the questions I had are based on, you know, options as well. So, when you all were looking at, and your committee was looking at the various options, was there anything put on the table or looked out for a more scaled-down version, perhaps, that would enable the transfer of current equipment to the new one? I know you expressed a need for another one in the future as well. Could that be?
Right. A lot of equipment is getting transferred over. There's only a few things that are new, that are coming with the current, the new end, sorry, the new ladder trucks. We are, we took off the generator that we have on the old truck. We're gonna get battery-powered fans instead of, what was, Teddy, what was the other thing?
Flashlights and...
Right.
There's very little new equipment on this at all.
Right. Very little new equipment overall. There is some new stuff, but it's minor compared to past years, where a lot more new equipment. When they had brought me the specs, I had asked them to trim it back, knowing that it would be an issue with costs. And we were looking to cut back as much as we could to make it a viable presentation for the city.
Okay. And it's my understanding, please correct me if I don't have this right, and some of the things that we've been reading, that the truck wouldn't get here until 2023?
Right, it's about an 18-month turnaround time. So, by the time you sign it, it'll be about 18 months before it's built and then in-service here.
Okay. Does that provide room, like, say, for example, we, you know, just, I'm just throwing something out there, we missed this deadline or whatever on the 31st, would that afford us some time, since it is like a longer time to look at any other options in between, like, you know, how does that?
If you wanted to do that, if you wanted to take time and not do this now, and you want to take another three months, it would, we'd decide to go with Pierce. It would be three months from, 18 months from then. If you decide Pierce is not the truck we want, and we want to do something, excuse me, do something else, we're starting from ground zero again, and gonna go out and spec a truck, and it's gonna take a while to do it. And then from there, depending on how long that company would take to build it, it would go on from there. So, guesstimating, two years, three?
Two to three years. And just my last, my last question, and others on here may know this. So, it was my understanding also that this would be tied into the capital budget versus operational budget, and I just had a concern about that. Is, has that been reexamined, or is that still the proposed way?
I'm gonna have to defer to Ina for that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Ina, do you want to speak on that, please?
Hello, good evening. So, I'm sorry, Tina, I want to make sure that I'm answering the exact question. So, you were asking about the concerns that it's in a capital budget versus operating budget? So, I actually think that it's very important that we talk about it, so we're all on the same page about capital versus operating for items of this magnitude. So, it's about $1.7, $1.8 million purchased. We don't have, in operating budget itself, we don't have funds to buy it outright, right? So, it's, we need to buy it using different kinds of financing, right? So, either we buy it by issuing bonds, getting money and paying for it, or we can lease something like that, which is a capital lease, and we would be paying for it throughout whatever the term of the lease is, with a dent when we're paid off, we, the city own the car. So, both leases and bonds, they have their own pros and cons. And it's important for the city to, at the time that we actually have to pay for something like that, to evaluate and quantify exactly the cost of borrowing through leasing and the cost of borrowing through bonding. And it could only be done at the time that we're ready. It could be done now, but obviously markets change between now and the 18 months from now, or three years from now. So, interest rates on bonds and interest rates on leases will change from now to then, and we would, we would need to do this kind of analysis at that point. So, I'm sure that everybody knows what... Okay, I didn't realize. My media was not working. So, both leases and bonds have their pros and cons. So, a lease is an obligation that's secured by leased equipment. So, basically, until we're paid totally for the equipment, lease company or financing company owns that asset, not the city. We have to, the city has to do an annual appropriation, meaning that every year, city council has to approve amounts needed to pay down that lease. It does not require credit rating. It's a subject to a period of probable usefulness. So, usually, lease company would not lease you something for 20 years if they think that the normal useful life of an asset is 10, right? Rates tend to be higher than bonds on leases. I'm sorry.
Donna, would you be able to summarize?
So, I think, if, I want to make sure I understand your question correctly. Whether we're gonna do a capital lease or whether we're a bond, we really can't say at this point. We will do whatever is best for the city, once we know that it is ready. The idea of putting in operating is that if we have a lease, then we put the lease payments within the operating budget every year. However many years, the lease tells us that, you know, if it's a five-year lease or a 10-year lease. If it's a bond, that means that it turned out to be much cheaper for us to bond the money, but when we bond it, it still has to be paid back over the useful life of the asset. So, we really can't say whether it will be capital or whether it would be capital or operating. We're just going to do the best that we can do. We also have time to look at grants and look at other funding sources. In the meantime, while we're trying to get the fire, while we're waiting for the fire truck to come. So, we're looking at money everywhere. We're looking, we're gonna look for money everywhere.
Right.
Yeah. So, just, I guess, for some clarity here, then if we approve the purchase of the truck, we are obligating ourselves financially to this purchase without knowing how we're going to pay for it yet. Is that correct? That's correct. Okay. Is that, is that an acceptable practice? Can we do that? Well, you can, Rich, you want to answer that? Because you can say, we're gonna bond the truck, and that at the time it comes, if we can lease it, we can lease it at a better rate. I mean, the concern is, let's say it goes into the capital plan.
The general practice and recommendation on large purchases like this, right, is to, or what we've done, is we pair a resolution like this with the purchase of equipment simultaneously with a publication of a bond ordinance, right? What that bond ordinance does, right, is authorizes the council, the city, to bond at a future date. It's not the bond itself, but it at least gives the, gives the city the opportunity to bond for it, if that's the best possible route. In the bond ordinance itself, you'll find that there's some flexibility in the bond ordinance, which allows for funding through maybe, through grants, if we find a grant, right? And we don't have to bond for it. The other alternative that Ina kind of touched on is the finance and lease aspect of it. So, the best practice, John, is to, or the common practice is to authorize the bond simultaneously with the equipment purchase.
Best practice, yes, would be to have a bond authorization, because that would allow for a payment in any course would we choose to buy it, or now or later. And if, if and when we have to pay for it, the city will always evaluate its best way to finance it.
And the, and the major distinction she kind of touched on, Ina touched on a moment ago, was difference between leasing and bonds, right? Bonds is a general pledge of money. So, it's guaranteed full faith and credit, and your lease is basically, all right, if you miss a payment or a subsequent administration fails to appropriate funds for it, the truck gets repoed. It's basically a security interest on the truck. So, those are, those are some of the things that she clarified in that little presentation she had.
So, along the lines procedurally, then, I guess, I got, along those lines is, so, so we're buying this under basically a Houston, City of Houston contract, this HGAC. And the item, this FS-19VA09, as we said earlier in the presentations for Pierce Arrow, though the resolution said it was for an enforcer, now we're finding out it's actually a velocity. What I, I guess what I need clarity on is, if this contract is to buy a Pierce enforcer, that's what the contract authorizes purchase of, how can we buy a different fire truck under that contract?
I think the bid document itself is a cooperative purchasing program. Like, that's how the bid was put out. So, you have approved vendors for a particular type of vehicle or make. And with a particular make, you'll have a bunch of different models in that make. I think that's how the, that's how the Houston, Houston Galveston...
Yeah, I got them all here.
Right, right.
I believe the mistake also is corrected too. Like, they resent over the adjusted to say the velocity.
No, no, that may be true, but what I'm saying is, if they're buying it under FS-19VA09, that's for, that's for an Arrow. So, I guess, my question is, how are we buying a velocity under a contract for an Arrow? Did you just say, Joe, the commissioner, that they corrected that?
That was corrected last week. It was sent over again, and what was it, the velocities and add-on? Can I, I'm gonna have one of the...
I think I know. I think I got it. So, your contract number is FS-12-19. John's point is, is that, I'm sorry, Councilman Vendo's point is, is that the 19VA09 is the product code of that particular transaction that identifies the enforcer rather than the Pierce. So, we need to make a correction to have the proper product code.
That may be the case, I guess. If there's a product code for, if there may be a contract for, first of all, velocity, the word, this is the first we're hearing of this. So, I don't know if there's a contract, a product code for, under HGAC for a velocity. There might be. But right now, the, what we've been proposing to buy contract-wise, like I said, is an Arrow. So, that's where I'm not getting the connection of, if the contracts for an Arrow, we're buying a different chassis or truck. So, will the contract be adjusted to what we're actually buying? I think that's the question. Whatever we're buying, that's what the contract should say. That would make sense. Yeah. So, let's just make sure that that happens. And the other, and then the other thing is, you know, as part of this lengthy meeting I had with the former Fire Commissioner from New York, we contacted FDNY and just asking if it would be permissible for the city to piggyback on their contracts, because they buy clearly a lot more equipment than anyone else. And the city did say, yeah, we could piggyback on them. It goes through the Department of Citywide Administrative Services.
Councilman Vendo, can you just hold off, because Commissioner Miller is... Councilman Vendo, can you just hold off because Commissioner Miller is no longer with us?
Yeah, he must have juke.
Dropped off.
Well, this, this has actually.
He dropped off. I'm, I'm trying to get him reconnected right now. Hang on.
No longer with us on the Zoom, please.
Right, this probably has less to do with him than it does probably with uh our, the purchasing side of it.
So what I would say is that um, the gentleman that you talked to, it would have been nice if he had have contacted us and told us before tonight that we could piggyback on NYPD fire.
The person, the person I spoke with offered to help with the selection of the fire truck. And he was told that his services were not desired.
Okay, but I'm saying the NYPD, if, I mean, the NYFD, that if we could have piggyback on their contract, had I known, maybe we would have reached out, not maybe.
I just found out.
We would have reached out.
I, I, I just found out. That's what I'm saying. I, you know, I.
So.
Look, I mean, I took like twenty-five or thirty hours into this.
The gentleman that you talked to, I would like to talk to him. Um, since he said that he reached out, they didn't want his help, um, but he was willing to help you. So if you could just pass on the information to me, I will reach out with, to him, and I will reach out with Commissioner Miller. And we will talk to him so we can get a better understanding, um, because now we're in the twenty-fourth hour um of this, and I would like to hear what he has to say.
I think. I have a, you know, I have um, I have some further questions before we jump to that, to that point, which would have helped build up to where you are at right now. And um, so what you're talking about is um, is process, right? So I had some initial questions, which would I would, would have rather come before the financing questions here.
Okay, I think we're there.
Hi, okay.
Welcome back.
I'm just, I'm just gonna just jump on, focus on some operational questions here to which will build up to John's point or some of his points. Um, Firematic. Um, I have a, I think, four questions um that I'll just rattle off, and then if you could answer, um, how long, how long have they been our equipment suppliers, number one? Um, what is that, what is their commission that they get off each purchase? Um, and is that competitive? And, and how do we know it's a competitive commission? And then um finally, um, uh Pierce, the manufacturer is prominently featured on um all over Firematic's website. So, you know, I really like a better understanding of how long, you know, we've been dealing with Fire, Firematic and how do I know that they're the best supplier and that we get, we get the most, they get the most, you know, we get the best rate from them.
Yep.
You know, when they're, when their preferred supplier is Pierce.
Right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put Chief Hawkeye back on. He has that info because they've dealt with him for a long time.
Yeah, that's, that's my point.
Just to let you know, Firematic Supply has been in operation for well over thirty years. We bought our, the original committee I was on in nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine to buy our first ladder truck that I was involved with was a Pierce and Firematic was the dealer. Um, when it comes to fire truck manufacturers, a lot of the, uh, their, their local dealers sell other products. So for example, you've heard the term jaws of life, which is a generic term for the Hurst tool. They're like our Hurst tool dealers. So they don't just sell fire trucks, they sell other equipment as well. So as far as what their commission rates are, it's, it's a moot point because they're not going to share what they make in commissions, and you cannot buy a Pierce in the metro area except from Firematic Supply.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's exactly my concern. You know, if, if there's only one, one game in town, how, how do I know?
It's that way with every fire truck manufacturer. They get, they have a manufacturer's rep that reps it. For example, the truck that we have now um came from Neville Fire Apparatus. They had the contract to sell Ferrari. Today, because Ferrari was now bought by somebody called the Rev Group, Hendrickson Fire Equipment is now the dealer. So you can't shop a vehicle separate from the dealer that's tied to that contractual area.
Right, so but my question, but so but the relevant question here is, I can't, we can't a dealer can't shop, we have to go with a specific dealer. Have we shopped the dealer?
You can't shop the dealer in the metro New York area. They are the sole dealer. It's like walking into a Chevy dealer and trying to buy a Mercedes. Okay, it, it's a captive audience, and that's the way it's always been.
So we have to go with Firematic. It is a monopoly in the, in the tri-state area.
If we're gonna get pierced, then yes, then Firematic.
So the thing is, but why are we getting pierced? Because we deal with Firema, like, have we dealt with Firematic? Are we getting pierced because we've always dealt with Firematic and that's the way we've always done things in the?
No.
But let me try to explain the process a, a, a little more clearly. Um, basically, once we develop the criteria for a vehicle, okay, like in this case, minimum a hundred foot platform length. Um, a lot lower than our current apparatus because trees in Long Beach have done damage to the truck many times, you know, just the various criteria. And with that determined that, okay, we wanted to get a midship ladder tower. We then looked at all the manufacturers of midship ladder towers that met the criteria that we set. Pierce was the one that met or exceeded our criteria, and that's when we started working with Firematic to spec the vehicle. Um. One, one of the advantages of using Pierce is they are a sole source manufacturer. Um, you know, everybody gets a Cummins engine, but it's the metal that makes up the truck. Pierce makes the chassis, the cab, and the aerial device. Whereas our current vehicle, which is a Ferrari, the ladder is made by a company called Smeal. So when it comes to problems, you sometimes get that cross finger. It's not my fault, problem is their problem. So what, not that this is the overriding reason, but one of the reasons we went with Pierce, because they were a sole source supplier. And more importantly, they met every criteria for the type of apparatus we were looking to switch to.
John, I'll throw it back to you and, but I do have another question after that. Thank you, Commissioner.
Roy, you're muted if you're trying to talk.
I, yeah, I have a question on what was just said, if, if you don't mind. Um, you said you started working with Firematic to spec the vehicle. And I'm looking at, at what you sent us, and thank you, Commissioner Miller. Um, specifications for a hundred uh foot heavy-duty aerial tower. And this is at the time we were talking about bids and sealed bids will be received by Long Beach Fire Department for furnishing of all necessary labor equipment and material for the fire apparatus. And then it goes through a hundred forty-seven pages of the specs. But when you look at these specs, they're very, very, very specific to a quarter inch of the type of stuff that you want. For example, front tires. The front tires shall be Goodyear radios, four forty-five dash slash sixty-five R, twenty-two point five, twenty ply, all position G, two fifty-six MS tread, okay? The tires shall be mounted on our cola twenty-two point uh five O times thirteen poly, this type wheels with ten stud, eleven point two five bolt circles, rear axle shall be a Mentor model RT fifty-two, one eighty-five. And in other words, you go through this a hundred forty-seven pages, and it's very, very specific. Was, so Firematic helped you draw up these specifications?
When you do any large-scale purchase, I, I'm an IT guy. I bought millions of dollars of IT equipment. It's the same way. Once you work with a manufacturer that you pick, and it is an item that's going out to bid, they write, they give you the specs in very specific fashion so that really only, but they never say Pierce, and you'll never see it. But they always put the specs in a very specific, the only name brands you'll see are generic components. But it's written in a very specific fashion on how they manufacture it. So that if Joe's fire equipment comes in for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which they claim is the same vehicle, and you compare spec to spec, they won't be the same, and you don't have to, and the exceptions allow you to not get that lower bid because it's not the same vehicle. It's like.
So in, in other words, if this had gone out to bid, nobody else could have built, bid on it except Pierce.
Everybody could have bid on it. Nobody would have the specifications except Pierce, and that's the way it's always written.
Well, well, their specifications are by manufacturer, right?
Right, if, if we were, like you mentioned KME, and I'll be honest, we looked at a KME before we bought the current truck. Not good. But if we were to buy a KME, we would have gotten a bid spec that they wrote with you know, specific to their vehicle so that Pierce couldn't bid on it. Well, let me rephrase that. Anybody can bid on it, but Pierce wouldn't be able to match the important specifications that delineate one manufacturer's vehicle from another.
So putting it out to bid is actually a snoma because it's already been decided before it would go out to bid.
Absolutely, and I bet you that happens with garbage trucks and everything else.
So, wait, what, so, okay, so in, 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 in doing my due diligence, I, I got from, from FDNY, I got two of their uh specification sheets uh or specifications for ladder trucks. One was a hundred and sixty-eight pages, the other was two hundred and eight pages. FDNY developed the specifications and then sends them out to the vendors for bids. So.
Well. The FDNY uses very specific brands that will meet their standards and their spec. Um, they do not have a vehicle like this at all. Um, they do not use ladder towers in the city of New York. They use something called the tower ladder. I'm not gonna get into specifics unless you want to know the difference, but they do not use ladder towers. They use tower ladders or they use straight aerials.
That may be true. I guess what I'm getting at is the process clearly is now, granted, they buy a lot more equipment than we do. We buy a fire truck once every ten years. I, I get that.
There are, there are certain things that we couldn't tell Pierce we want them to do. They may, they may do them at an extremely high price, or they may not do it at all. The city of New York, with the volume that they purchased and the length of their purchase agreement, because if they don't bid each truck individually, um, they can dictate terms to a manufacturer. Then again, you have a company like Pierce who won't bid on the FDNY specs because they don't want to meet them.
All right, so it sounds like as a smaller fire department that buys much less equipment, much less frequently, we would come up with a more general criteria. Talk to a vendor, the vendor says, here's how we, here's the equipment that would close, most closely match your needs and add the necessary whistles and bells to get you where you need to be.
Yeah, there, there is a base vehicle of a type, and then you go through it with the dealer. Um, what can, what are the options? What can we do with it? You know?
So, you know, I think, so this, like, I'm not closing, but this, these have all been really, um, really great information, very informative. Um, you know, we really appreciate everyone's time. Um, so what, what's obvious here is that um because of, for many, many reasons, which we don't need to get into, it seems like we don't not, we do not have an overall fleet maintenance program for the fire department. Would you agree with that?
Uh. We, well, working with the city garage, we do try to keep our uh trucks up to date and do preventive. For a long-term plan as a sense of buying new vehicles, there was always something planned going forward, whether it came to fruition or not through the capital uh you know, plans might not have happened, but they, they, they definitely have had things that they wanted to do. But again, as always, it always comes down to money. Um, starting here, going forward now, though, is we are going to be being very proactive with planning for the future. As we've already discussed, and when I mentioned to you originally, the uh one ladder truck now, and the other one is starting to have issues, and we should start planning for that now and starting now, so we will have time to decide how and when to replace it next.
It's, it's just, it's just a little concerning to me that, you know, that um, you know, when we're looking about, at the bigger picture here as a council is that, you know, uh, we have, you know, this need for this one truck, and it seems like a one-off, whereas you know, the way the budget is managed and everything else and the capital plan, it's a multi-year strategic sort of forward-looking process. Which, you know, you are coming in at the, at, right at the time when all the questions are getting asked, right? And.
Of course.
And, and so it's like no good deed goes unpunished here, and you're asked, you know, and we have some of, that's giving us all this information, so. You know, you know, what I keep thinking is a fleet management program, and I think of uh multi-vehicle discounts. You know, where we go with one manufacturer so that we say we can buy this truck now, but but if you give us a better price, we can buy this engine in a year from now. So give me a good, better deal, you know, where's?
I, what I want to say is that in the past, there has not been any fleet management. That's what we're trying to do.
Exactly.
The only thing we can do is go by where we are right now and start to try to move forward. Um, and so, and it's not just for the fire department, it's for every department that has trucks within the city. We need a good management program because if you see some of the trucks, you wonder, you know, how long they'll be ru, still running. Um, a, and we do have software that does fleet management, so that is being, all the information is being inputted into that. So I guess my, my first concern is I would like to talk, um, get with Commissioner Miller and talk to this gentleman from um, from the New York Fire Department. Um, I want to be able for us to answer questions and move forward. I want the, I want the residents to feel that the staff has worked extremely hard to get to where we are now and that we are trying to do the best we can with the situation that we have. And that we're not trying to overspend money, we're not trying to do anything. So I would really like to talk to this gentleman with Commissioner Miller so that we can get more clarity. Um, and then if we need to, um, when we go, we can, if you all have additional questions, we can send some information out, and if you have additional questions that you could ask or send us the questions, that we can answer those questions on Monday.
Uh, I, I just want to thank you for that, Donna. I just want to point out that, um, you know, you have been instrumental um, um, in making sure that we follow process um, in the city now, um, with everything, every single thing that we do. And um, you know, I want to make you clear that the fire, the Board of Fire Commissioners, right? Um, to me, still needs to be brought into this process. Um, because their power per our charter is that they shall have the care, custody, and control of all properties belonging to the fire department. So to me, our checks and balances and our process is that I can go to the Board of Commissioners, Fire Commissioners, and ask each one of them, are you comfortable with this? Have you done the due diligence? They're the ones that should be asking all of these questions. I appreciate there was a truck committee, but that, you know, I'd like to see that truck committee report to the Fire Board of Commissioners, and then the Fire Board of Commissioners present to a, you know, be part of this conversation tonight. So hopefully, you know, that could happen um sooner rather than later. And again, you know, that um this uh, this gentleman, uh, that was a former uh commissioner for FDNY, if he could um provide some of his input. Um, it's always great to have an independent perspective on things, so um you know, uh, what, what, I don't really see the harm there. Um, does anybody on the council have any other questions or comments?
Just.
Go ahead, Roy.
I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
No, no, I was just gonna thank Joe and his team for their patience because, like I said, we've been peppering them with a lot of questions uh, the last week and a half or so, and uh, and not easy questions to answer. So uh, 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 thank you. I just hope you guys understand, we're just doing it as part of our due diligence to make sure, um, you know, we need to make sure you get the equipment you need uh for your guys and, but also make sure we are making sure the taxpayers' interests are represented as well.
Absolutely, I understand completely, and I hope that we were able to answer a lot of your questions tonight.
It's fabulous.
Yeah.
Great job. Roy, did you have a comment?
Yeah, um, and, and Joe, thank you so much. Thank you. I know we've, you know, asking a lot. Donna, I guess I, I'm a, a little uh I don't upset or concerned about the bid process from what I've heard tonight. From what I've heard tonight, basically, the bid process is the vendor gives you specifications so that only one person, uh, anyone can bid, but only one person can fit the specifications. And I've often said, it, it bothers me. And I've often said it, it bothers me that we only seem to get one bid for so many things, only one bid. And, you know, I thought, do we have an obligation to put something like this out to bid?
You should, I mean, this happened to be one item that they wrote the specifications that what I understood them to say was that they went around, they looked at different trucks, they came up with what they wanted and then the specifications were written, but not all bids are done that way. Bids, uh how we do the bid process is that the team says, this is what we want, we come up with our own specifications and you put it out to bid. A lot of times that, one of the reasons we found out that people, which we changed was only, we would only get one bid was because there was insurance requirements within the bid. And that meant that some companies would have to get additional insurance. So I asked them to take that out, but but to say that if you were awarded the bid, you would have the insurance requirement within so many days of being um of receiving the bid. And that if you didn't, then we would go to the next um person. So that too, I think, will allow more people to bid because why would you buy additional insurance not knowing if you were going to receive that bid? Um also, there are people that just specialize. So when we send out bids, if we think that we only got one back, however, we, there might be other people, for example, the bike share program, we put that bid out at least twice, I believe, and we finally got it back on the third time with additional bidders because we reached out to other people. So it it all depends, but not all bid specs are, not all bid documents are put together the way they they did in the fire department. But we are doing everything we can to increase and make our RFP process better.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I just need to make a clear distinction. This is, this was not a bid. This wasn't a normal procurement, but this was a piggyback off of, off of an existing contract. If this, if this was, if this was a bid, I'd probably call a halt to this entire meeting. This was a piggyback off of a contract from the Houston Galveston area, right? Which we piggybacked off of and directly contacted the vendor to get the specs from them.
So piggybacking is a way basically not to have to go through the bid process.
Right, authorized by general municipal law and as long as the contract provides it is piggybackable, we can directly interface with the vendor to get that.
And again, as long as we have the process in place with the checks and the balances that we can make sure that that the piggybacking is okay, then we're operating on all, you know, on four wheels, you know, full steam ahead.
Well, I don't necessarily agree with that because bidding, the purpose of bidding is to get the best price.
Um I think, you know, this is what, you know, this is why it's, you know, again, this is why I am not in government, I don't, I am not an expert on purchasing um large fire department trucks nor pencils or paper or anything else in the government system. Everything, there's different levels and different criteria of purchasing. And I would less say that vehicles like this are unique and have their own set of rules, which may be different than your regular standard purchasing, but this is a learning opportunity for all of us. And I think that's what we're, what's happening here. And that means, but that means that we're getting to the best decision. So I wanna thank everybody, um is there anything else? Okay, again, thank you, Commissioner Miller.
Thank you.
And the the truck committee, um have a good weekend, stay safe out there um with the impending snowstorm and I will see you on February first for the city council meeting.
And thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.